Distinguished delegates, I call to order the fifth plenary meeting of the special session of the Assembly. And I would join the words of the coordinator of the working group and appreciating your patience during these long hours of today, waiting for the documentation to be ready. This afternoon, we will first consider the draft resolutions before the Assembly. We will then hear the report of the credentials committee. Finally, the rapporteur will introduce the report of the special session of the Assembly, and we will adopt the report of the special session. The updates of some draft texts have been made available only today. Since we must conclude our work today as envisaged in Rule 56 of the Rules of Procedure of the Assembly, and has been the past practice of the Assembly, we shall now proceed to take action on the draft resolution before us. The Assembly will first turn to agenda item four, states in areas. I would like to inform you that the secretariat has confirmed that Bolivia, previously in areas, has now paid a sufficient amount of its areas. And as a result, Bolivia falls within the voting threshold set out in Article 112, paragraph eight of the Rome Statute, and has regained its right to vote in the Assembly and the We shall now revert to agenda item nine, review of the amendments on the crime of aggression. Here we take up the report of the working group on the Kampala Review and the draft
Their position or their initial positions were. We also have to highlight the important signal that we are all sending by being united at this critical and important juncture. We also highlight our joint commitment to strengthen the jurisdiction of the court over the crime of aggression and our ability to put forward a way to move forward together on this important matter. We have an obligation of result when it comes to the issue of the crime of aggression. It is for these reasons, for our unity in favor of the court, in favor of advancing our common fight against impunity, for the constructive approach taken by everyone, to give a chance to come together and to stand united and to move forward in a united fashion, that the State of Palestine has accepted to join this consensus. And I thank you, Madam President.
I thank you for your statement. I do not see any other delegations wishing to take the floor before taking action on the resolution. May I take it that the Assembly wishes to adopt the draft resolution contained in document ICC ASP S1/ L5 without a vote? I see no objection. The draft resolution contained in document ICC ASP S1/ L5 is adopted. Is there any delegation wishing to explain its position after the adoption of the resolution? I see none. I see Liechtenstein, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Thank you for giving me the floor. I know we are under time pressure, but I want to briefly take this opportunity to offer a few thoughts here, maybe not as a proper explanation of position in a traditional sense. I think everybody in this room knows what we, as a delegation, came here to do, together with a very big number of friends and supporters. And the goal for us at this session was to harmonize the jurisdiction over the crime of aggression with that, that the court has over the other three core crimes. Against this background, of course, we are not satisfied with the outcome of this session because this objective we have not achieved. We regret this because we do believe it was the right moment for doing it and it was a historic opportunity to do so at a time when the rule of law at the international level and especially the rules governing the use of force are being undermined in a manner that we have not seen in our lifetimes. We are gathering here at the United Nations Headquarters, as we should, and as we are glad that we are gathering, and we are very happy to see that everybody was able to travel to New York and that we think it's an extremely important sign of the resilience of this Assembly. This building and this organization essentially is founded on the purpose of preventing and ending armed conflict, and this is why we believe the law that is reflected in the amendment annexed to the resolution is so important, not just for the court, but in fact for the international order. Now, we are taking a lot of positives away with us from this session, and in particular the fact that we have been able to gather such amazing momentum in support of harmonization. And I cannot thank everybody who I want to thank in this room, but I want to say that it has been a pleasure and really an honor to be able to play the role that we have been playing in this effort. I really want to thank everybody in this room, including the people that did not agree with us. I want to thank you, Madam President, for your extremely steadfast leadership in preparing for this session, which has been a big challenge, and you have shown a very steady hand and true leadership, and we all owe you, we all owe you big, big thanks, big gratitude. And I want to pay tribute really to my, to my own team, if I may, who have been truly amazing in, in showing leadership in preparing for this session and in assisting me and many in this room throughout this session. So with this, thank you for indulging me, and again, thanks to you, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for the kind words. I would, of course, join also the coordinator and the previous speaker on thanking the constructive approach all delegations have shown and the hard work that has been put into finding a formula that will be acceptable to all. I do not see any further requests for the floor, so I would then propose that we would proceed to attend item 5B, a report of the credentials committee. I give the floor to the Chair of the Credentials Committee, France, Zubieta, of Bolivia, to present the report of the credentials committee contained in document ICC ASP S1/ L2.
Madam President, distinguished delegates. The Credentials Committee held two meetings on the 7th and 9th of July 2025. The committee considered an updated memorandum, regularly updated by the Secretariat, on the credentials of the representatives of the states party in the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court for the special session on the review of amendments on the crime of aggression. The committee wishes to inform the Assembly that today, the 9th of July 2025 at 4:00 p.m., the formal credentials of the representatives for the special session on the review of amendments pertaining to the crime of aggression have been presented to the Secretariat, and these have been sent for a head of state or government or for the Minister of Foreign Affairs as pursuant to Article 24 of the rules of procedure of the ASP and the Rome Statute of the ICC on behalf of the 77 states parties. Germany, Andorra, Armenia, Australia, Austria, Bangladesh, Barbados, Belgium, the pleural national state of Bolivia, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Brazil, Bulgaria, Burkina Faso, Cambodia, Canada, Chile, Colombia, Costa Rica, Croatia, Cyprus, Turkey, Denmark, Ecuador, El Salvador, Slovakia, Slovenia, Estonia, Spain, Finland, France, Georgia, Ghana, Greece, Guatemala, Guyana, Iceland, Italy, Ireland, Japan, Jordan, Kenya, Latvia, Liechtenstein, Lithuania, Luxembourg, North Macedonia, Malawi, Malta, Mexico, Mongolia, Montenegro, New Zealand, Niger, Nigeria, Norway, the Kingdom of the Netherlands, the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland, Paraguay, Peru, Poland, Portugal, the Democratic Republic of the Congo, the Dominican Republic, the Republic of Korea, the United Republic of Tanzania, Romania, Saint Kitz and Nevis, San Marino, Senegal, Serbia, Sierra Leone, South Africa, Sweden, Switzerland, Timor-Leste, Ukraine, and Uruguay and Djibouti. The information on the appointment of the states party's representatives as a special session on the review of amendments pertaining to the crime of aggression of the ASP was made known to the Secretariat by means of cable fax or other means of electronic communication by the head of state or government or the Ministry for Foreign Affairs on, from the following 22 states parties, Albania, Argentina, Belize, Botswana, Cabo Verde, Ivory Cote d'Ivoire, the State of Palestine, Gambia, Guinea, the Marshall Islands, Liberia, Madagascar, Mali, Nauru, Panama, the Republic of Moldavia, Trinidad and Tobago, Tunisia, Uganda, Vanuatu, Venezuela, the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela. Here, the Credentials Committee recommends that the Assembly should accept the credentials of the representatives of the states party that I have mentioned, on the understanding that those states parties which have not yet done so shall submit their formal credentials to the Secretariat as soon as possible. And, Madam, this concludes the report of the Credentials Committee. Thank you very much.
I thank the Chair of the Credentials Committee for introducing the report. May I take it that the Assembly wishes to approve the report of the Credentials Committee as contained in document ICC ASP S1/ L2? I see no objection, it is so decided. We have thus concluded our consideration of agenda item five. The Assembly will now consider the report, draft report of the special session. Before proceeding to adopt the report, I invite the Rapporteur, Ms. Farida Yasmin, from Bangladesh, to introduce the draft report of the special session contained in document ICC ASP S1/ L1.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the honor to present the draft report of the Assembly of States Parties to the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court, which held its special session on the review of the amendments on the crime of aggression at the United Nations Headquarters in New York from 7 to 9 July 2025. The report is contained in document ICC ASP S1/ L1. All necessary references to the resolutions adopted by this Assembly will be reflected in the report as appropriate. The official documents of the special session of the Assembly will be published in one volume. This volume will contain the Assembly's report consisting of two parts. The first part includes the debates of the session and is divided into two chapters. Chapter A, titled Introduction, covering paragraphs 1 to 15, provides factual information on the invitation to participate in the special session, the opening of the session, the composition of the Credentials Committee, the adoption of the agenda, and the organization of work. Chapter B, titled Consideration of the Items on the Agenda of the Special Session on the Review of the Amendments on the Crime of Aggression, deals with the work conducted during the session. It provides factual information on the Assembly's activities in relation to each item on the session's agenda. It refers to various outcomes regarding the activities conducted, the resolutions and decisions adopted, the recommendations made, and the agreements reached by the Assembly. Chapter B is divided into seven sections. Paragraphs 16 to 18 of section one refer to states in areas. Paragraphs 19 and 20 of section two of the draft report address the Credential Committee of the states parties at the special session. In section three, paragraphs 21 to 23 refer to organization of work. Paragraphs 24 to 26 of section four refer to the general debate that took place during the special session. In section five, paragraphs 27 to 28 refer to the lessons learned from the Kampala amendments, ratification procedures, and their implementation, of which the Assembly took note. In section six, paragraphs 29 to 30 of section six refer to the items related to the activities of the working group on the Kampala review, of which the Assembly took note. Paragraph 30 indicates that the Assembly adopted Resolution ICC ASP S1/ RAS.1, by which it, ICC ASP S1/ RAS.1, by which it decided to convene a special session in 2029 in New York for no longer than five days to consider the proposal for amendment annexed to the present resolution with due consideration of other possible routes to enhance the court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression in line with the Rome Statute, establish a dedicated subgroup of the working group of amendment to take this process forward and to annually report to the Assembly of States Parties on progress, and decided to convene an intercessional meeting of no longer than two days in 2027 in New York in order to take stock and to advance discussions. In section seven, paragraphs 31 and 32, the report will express the appreciation of the Assembly to the state that has made a contribution to the trust fund for the participation of the least developed countries and other developing states in the work of the Assembly and the satisfaction of the Assembly that one delegate had made use of the fund. As for part two, I suggest that the Secretariat be invited to incorporate into the final report the resolutions adopted by the Assembly in its special session. The annexes to the report of the special session will include the report of the Credentials Committee, the report of the working group on the Kampala review, and a list of documents. The annexes will also include the statements in explanation of position in relation to the resolutions adopted at the special session. I would like to ask delegations if they have any linguistic or editorial corrections to the text in any of the languages, to please submit them directly to the Secretariat. The corrections will be incorporated later into the official records. Madam President, I conclude my presentation on the draft report of the special session of the Assembly recommending its adoption by the Assembly. Thank you very much.
I thank the Rapporteur for introducing the draft report of the special session of the Assembly. We shall now begin the adoption of our report. I propose that we proceed section by section, and as was mentioned by the Rapporteur, the delegation wishing to propose only editorial or technical corrections, they can contact the Secretariat directly. So we shall start with section A, introduction. Does the Assembly agree to adopt paragraphs 1 to 15? I do not see any requests for the floor. We shall move to next section, consideration of the issues on the agenda of the special session. First, states in areas, paragraph 16 to 18, whether they are acceptable? No comments. Next, credentials of representatives of states parties at the special session, paragraphs 19 to 20. Seems to be in order. And organization of work, paragraphs 21 to 23. No comments. General debate, paragraphs 24 to 26. That is also acceptable. Lessons learned from the Kampala amendments, ratification procedures, and their implementation, paragraphs 27 to 28. They are in order. Review of the Amendments on the Crime of Aggression, paragraph 29 to 30. No comments. And lastly, other matters, paragraph 31 to 32. We have thus completed the adoption of the, of our report. May I take it that it is the wish of the Assembly to adopt the report of the special session of the Assembly of States Parties as a whole? I see no objection. The report of the special session of the Assembly contained in document ICC ASP S1/ L1 is adopted. The Secretariat will compile the report and the relevant annexes as soon as possible. The final version will be posted on the official website of the court. May I take it that it is the wish of the Assembly to proceed on this basis? I see no objection, it is so decided. Distinguished delegates, we have thus concluded our consideration of the items on our agenda for the special session. I have understanding that the Coalition for the International Criminal Court has requested the opportunity to make a brief statement. Does the Assembly agree to invite the Coalition for the International Criminal Court to make such a brief statement? I see no objection. I give the floor to the Coalition for the International Criminal Court.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, distinguished delegation. Today, the Assembly missed a unique opportunity to reduce double standards in international law and reinforce the object and purpose of the Rome Statute, namely to put an end to impunity for the most serious crimes of concern to the international community as a whole, listed in Article 5 of the Statute. This is not only a regrettable outcome on paper, it will have real consequences for current and future victims around the world. You have heard the voices of civil society from around the globe supporting harmonization and highlighting that the time for justice is now. International law is under pressure, and the ICC is facing even greater pressure because both are designed to limit and deter the commission of grave international crimes. In these challenging times, we need to strengthen efforts towards international justice and the rule of law, not shy away from them, and in our pursuit of justice for victims, we must ensure that all avenues to access justice are available. We welcome the strong efforts by many states to advance towards the goal of harmonizing the jurisdiction of the court over the crime of aggression. The notable absence of approximately 25 states at this special session is, however, a disappointment, given the importance of this matter. We had hoped consensus could be found that would eliminate the asymmetry of the court's jurisdiction. These coming years should be used to achieve the goal of harmonization, as you also should continue to work tirelessly to defend the Rome Statute system and international justice from those who seek to limit avenues for accountability. Thank you very much.
I thank the Coalition for these remarks. Excellencies, distinguished representatives, we have now come to the end of this special session of the Assembly of States Parties. The Assembly's deliberations during this special session did not lead to the adoption of amendments that would have brought about harmonization of the Rome Statute with respect to the crime of aggression. Nevertheless, the Assembly has agreed to convene a special session in 2029 to continue its consideration of this important topic and to continue the work in the subgroup of the Working Group on Amendments in, before that. I commend the Assembly for its constructive spirit and willingness to advance this crucial agenda. By agreeing to convene a special session, we reaffirm our shared responsibility to further develop and refine the legal architecture addressing the crime of aggression. This decision reflects our ongoing commitment to justice, accountability, and the rule of law. I urge all member states to participate actively in the future and bringing their expertise and dedication to ensure meaningful progress, and I thank you for your engagement and resolve.
I would like to thank everyone who has participated in the discussions on the review of Kampala amendments at this special session and in the discussions of the Working Group on amendments in preparation for the session. I especially wish to acknowledge the leadership of Ambassador Juan Jose Quintana on this issue throughout 2025, both as Chair of the Working Group on Amendments and as Coordinator of the Working Group on the Kampala Review during the special session.
I thank my dear Vice Presidents, Ambassadors Michael Kanu from Sierra Leone and Ambassador Margareta Kasangana from Poland for their support and cooperation. I am also grateful to Bureau members for their constant support. I would like to thank delegations for the commitment and flexibility demonstrated during the last few days. This constructive approach has allowed the Assembly to come to decisions on the issues before it. I sincerely thank all states parties, observer states, and members of civil society for their valuable contributions to this process. I am also grateful to the interpreters for their assistance to our meetings and the technical team of the UN for its support. Last but not least, I thank the New York liaison office for the assistance it has provided and the ASP Secretariat for its constant support and guidance. In these difficult times, only a small part of the Secretariat was able to travel to New York, and I commend the work of the ASP Secretariat in these circumstances.
Before I close this session, I would like to invite you to rise and observe one minute of silence dedicated to prayer or meditation, in particular for victims and survivors of atrocity crimes around the world. I thank you, and now declare the special session of the Assembly of States Parties to the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court closed. I wish safe travels to those returning to the Hague or capitals and hope to see you in the regular session in the Hague in December. Thank you.